Forward, backward, because I'm in public hearing.
It used to be that the park manager would come, they would read that every meeting. I mean, a lot of these are advisory and they make recommendations.
Yes, I do too. Oh, Adam, she's the one who's like, "Oh." She just said, I think it was Sunday yesterday, I guess, to like, "The rain's on today," or like, something like that, like, "Just checking where our..."
Yeah. Oh, we didn't even have that. So you got automatic heights. Ooh. Yeah.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting out of the Calamazoo City Commission to Order for Monday, February 18th, 2019. Clerk Borling, roll call.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Cooney.
President.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Here.
Commissioner Sykes.
Commissioner Urban.
Here.
Vice Mayor Knott.
Here.
Mayor Hopewell.
Present. May we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Sykes?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. For our invocation this evening, you will have an invo-- or for our opening ceremony this evening, we'll have an invocation by Pastor Craig Watson of Calamazoo Fremont Methodist Church. I ask that you stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Good evening, Pastor.
Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful to be a part of this great city. Seeing compassion in action on a regular basis through the citizens and organizations of Calamazoo is becoming the hallmark here, and we pray will only continue, not only continue, but grow. May we all, from our leaders on down, continue to look to the needs of others and seek to help all people find respect, kindness, and consideration in our community. Today's the day when we honor those who have held the highest office in our land. Our Presidents have shown great courage, sacrifice, and honor in good times and bad, and for this we give thanks. And you have continued, Lord, often in ways only hindsight can provide, to give us leaders to guide our country forward. And on this day, we ask that you do the same here in our city. Please guide our leaders as they meet to set the course for Calamazoo. Give them wisdom and insight. Open their eyes to the needs that are to be addressed, as well as to the accomplishments to be celebrated. Help them to hear the voices of the people and decipher what they are saying. Guide them together toward the decisions that will point us all to a better future in our community, again, one that is known for its compassion and care for its citizens. We ask you, Lord, all these things with hope and faith. In your holy name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, you have the agenda before you. Are there any changes? Hearing none. Anyone in the audience wanting to comment on items under the consent agenda, that's items under F, that item will need to be moved to the regular agenda. If you have such an item, please indicate at this time.
Excuse me, what type of item?
Sir, the agenda is out there. We have a area that's called Consent Agenda. Any of those items that are on the agenda need to be moved to the regular agenda. We do have time for citizens' comments at the end.
I did know. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Hearing none. Communications Manager.
None, Your Honor.
Item E1, I will now open a public hearing to receive comments on a resolution adopting and approving the 2019 through 2023 Parks and Recreation Department five-year master plan and 10-year strategic vision. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, I would like to call forward our Parks and Recreation Director, Sean Fletcher, for a brief presentation on the plan.
Good evening, Director Fletcher.
Good evening. Thank you for the time. Just want to go over some of the work we've done over the past year reordering our five-year master plan and 10-year strategic vision. I did bring along our Deputy Director, Patrick McVary. He has been very instrumental in the park improvement projects over the past year and a half, so want to thank him for embracing that role. Put a quick shot up on Henderson Tot Lot. This is a picture of this park project as it was nearing completion last fall. And if you had been to that park in the past and have been to it now, dramatic change, and it's really a great example of the process that we have in place now to work with the residents, get their input, come back to them with some concepts, and then implement with their comments and make a complete upgrade to a park. So you probably know that our five-year master plan is required by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, and it makes us eligible for grants. The plan serves as a guide for our capital projects for the next five years. Our current plan just expired at the end of 2018. We've also created a 10-year capital plan internally so that we're really kind of ahead of the curve for the next 10 years and have a good plan in place. Imagine Fun, I placed a copy for each of you at your seat that includes our 10-year strategic vision, which helps guide our department in developing our park programs, creating and creating great events in addition to the capital improvements. We are also working currently on a 10-year plan for recreation facilities, so we're really looking at, in addition to this plan, looking at, you know, from a facility standpoint, what we need to be doing to support our programs. I did want to note that this plan, Imagine Fun, has been approved by our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and also the Planning Commission. So if you read through this plan, you'll see very strong connectivity to Imagine Calamazoo 2025. We really kind of took a page out of their book. They did a great job, obviously, with that plan, so we kind of use that as a bit of a blueprint. Just wanted to talk about great neighborhoods. I think our team is working very hard in this area. If you look at Davis Street Park, Crane Park, Rockwell Park, and then Henderson Tot Lot, which I showed you, are just, again, good examples of how we're working with our residents to improve parks and provide the amenities that the neighbors and residents desire. We base those improvements based on the input we get from our residents, and we have a good process in place that we've utilized a couple times now, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. I talked about the heavy Imagine Calamazoo 2025 influence. As far as our strategic vision goes, we focus a lot on youth development, as you know. So we're, we know it's very important to look at the places and programs that we have in place for youth because we know they provide a positive impact, and it's another way of making our great, our city a great place to live. I just want to highlight Super Rec and then All Things Possible as a couple examples of how we're focused on youth development. Complete neighborhoods, park programs, and special events like Movies in the Park are helping to create a sense of place in our community, and it's, parks are also a great way for people to get outdoors and exercise. So we know that parks are a key component to a complete neighborhood, and we are working with other departments in the city to make great neighborhoods a reality. Inviting public places, we know that the improvements that we make to parks are making an impact in helping change the perceptions of our parks. Reed Street Park will get a full facelift this year. Construction will start probably late spring, and the improvements for that park are long overdue. That park's at the corner of Reed and Portage, and if you've driven by there, you see a small piece of playground equipment. I think there may be a grill in there and a park sign. So it's about to get two age-appropriate playgrounds, a walking path, a small picnic shelter, a court space for multiple activities, benches, and landscape improvements. And this is a major focus of our work, of how we improve these parks, and we also have to look at, you know, the areas where we need to acquire some space, and I'll talk a little bit about that later as well. Community outreach, we did, excuse me, I just wanted to talk real quickly about the park improvement process. We have an initial meeting in the neighborhood at the park that we're going to improve, so last year we had a meeting in Reed Street Park. That's where we really talk about the vision for that particular space, and we get a lot of input from neighbors. Nothing's off the table. We have conversations. Many of our staff are there, and we're able to talk to people at that particular park. It's really a chance for us to give the neighbors the chance to talk about what they want. At that point, we also will have any relevant plan information, whether it's Imagine Calamazoo, our park master plan, obviously, a neighborhood plan. We look at all, we will look at all the comments that people have made throughout those planning processes and include that information as we start to plan a new park improvement. At that point, then, we have a concept plan that's developed based on the input that people have given us, and then we kind of refine that concept with the neighbors based on their input. Sometimes they see things on paper and change their mind. At that, at step three, we really have kind of a design pre-construction. It's really a final review meeting with the neighbors, if necessary. Sometimes we get, after the second meeting, people are happy and we don't meet again, but that's kind of that final opportunity to make some minor tweaks. And then we have our construction, where we keep people posted, and then about the construction process and timelines, and then if there are any concerns, we will go back to that neighborhood group and advise them. As far as community outreach, just real quickly, we, again, we stole out of the IK 2025 plan. We had four master plan community events where we were at different parks throughout the city. We were at La Croix, South Side, Rockwell, and Woods Lake. We had about 20 to 25 people show at each meeting, which we felt was good attendance, and we got some good input. We also had people and information available at the Movies in the Park, Every Lunchtime Live, and then we also went to the Millwood National Night Out, which had great attendance, and we were able to engage a lot of people at that meeting as well. Our community survey, we did a community survey in cooperation with this master plan process. We sent a packet out to 5,000 households, and we had 320 surveys returned. It's a lot of information that we have gone through and picked out some important statistical information. It is a statistically valid survey, so that means that we can look at that information and draw some conclusions based on the number of people that were surveyed and the information that we received. That information really helped us determine content regarding the strategic vision. This is just a map of the different respondents and where they were located throughout the city, and I only put that in because I think it, it's good that people from throughout the community provided input. Just a couple things about the community survey. Ninety-one percent of the people that responded said they had visited a park in the last year, which I think is great, and then I'm very proud of this statistic. Ninety-two percent of the people that surveyed ranked our most recent park improvements as either excellent or good, which I think is awesome. And then there was some information about them, what people wanted the most, and walking and biking trails was number one, which is really no surprise to us. One question we put in the survey very specifically, we know per the city charter, we're responsible for city parks and maintaining those parks, but we wanted to know and understand how the community felt about recreation programs, the events, youth programs, special events like Safe Halloween and tree lighting, and almost 61% of the people indicated that it was very important to them, so I think that's important to note. Just a couple quick things I wanted to talk about regarding the 10-year strategic vision. We have the goal, if you will, of improving each large community park by 2028, and that seems like a long way away, but it's really not that far away when you start talking about the planning process. We also want to have four spray pads constructed within the city, spread throughout the city in different quadrants. Our first spray pad will be on the north side in Farrow Park in 2020. Obviously, we want to focus on health and fitness as well, and then there are a couple other statistics that we want to work on as part of that 10-year strategic vision as well. This is just a quick shot of Upjohn Park. Put that on display here because we're proud of that segment. Ourselves and public services worked hard to get that segment done, and we see a lot of people using that segment to get to and from different parts of the city. Real quickly regarding the five-year master plan, as you can see, there's some 2019 projects. I talked about Reed Street, Springmont Tot Lot. Very excited about Rockwell Park. It will get a building much, much like the building at La Croix Park, so it'll have restrooms, a gathering area, and some storage space, and that will allow us to add a Super Rec site to the East Side neighborhood. Upjohn gets some port and play playground surface, and then we're working with public services to look at the Millam Park dam improvements. We're in the running for an aquatic habitat grant, which would address the dam and then a lot of the sediment that's upstream ahead of that. The current dam is failing. The water's coming around the dam, so we do need to address that. And then in, also this year, we will be doing planning for Verberg Park, so we will initiate our park improvement process, meet with the neighbors, and get their input. And wanted to really give a shout out to, for the most part, Steve Brown, who has written a number of grants for us. In the last master plan from 2014 to 2018, we secured almost a million dollars in grants, so getting the state funding is very helpful to get these programs, or get these parks improved. As I said, I put the executive summary in front of you, and it's a really good summary of the 171-page full document. Again, strong connectivity to Imagine Calamazoo 2025, and I don't know if Chris is here. He's going to talk just real quickly about the planning regions, and then the executive summary also includes our goals and objectives, and we continue to work on our strategic vision, and we'll tweak it annually with our team as we develop our annual plan.
Thanks, Sean. Good evening, Commissioners. One of the things that, well, let me choose myself first. My name is Chris Corey. I'm the West Michigan Manager for McKenna. We were very proud to help the Parks Department, help the city with Imagine Fun, along with our partners at OCBA and the ETC Institute. With regard to the parks' planning regions, we took a look at the city and the 30-plus properties the Parks Department manages. With the exception of some of the very large ones like Spring Valley or Millam, the parks are inherently neighborhood amenities. They're neighborhood assets. So we wanted the plan to be organized on the basis of neighborhoods. But when you look at the neighborhoods of the city, they vary in size, and there are quite a few of them. So what we tried to do is take those neighborhoods as building blocks and put them together into approximately equally sized areas that we called Parks Planning Regions. Within the Parks Planning Regions, there's anywhere from one to five neighborhoods. Millwood and Edison are their own park planning region because they're so big. But, and then what do we end up with, eight? Yeah, so we end up with eight, eight Parks Planning Regions, and then the document, the full document, the 171 pages, is organized by those. So you can see data in terms of demographics in each of the, each of the parks' regions. You can see sidewalks and bike trails and how you get to the parks, and then you can, of course, see the information on the parks, both their existing condition and the capital plan for the next five years and the vision for the next 10. So that's the building block of the, of the, of the document. If you have time to look through it. Like I said, we're very excited to help with this process and excited to bring it to a close so that the Parks Department can move forward with some really exciting projects. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, Commissioners? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Well, let's handle questions for now, and then we'll make comments during Commissioners' discussion. Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone wanting to speak on the Parks Plan, the Parks Plan that was just presented, please step forward. You'll have four minutes. Give us your name and whether you live within the city. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a motion? Moved by Vice Mayor Knott.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Urban. We are in discussion. Commissioner Cooney?
Sykes, thank you, because you guys do such a great job. It's always amazes me how much you can do with the size of your staff and your responsiveness to the community and the creativity that you show, and especially the way you've developed programs for young people in our community. I just think it's great, so thank you for what you're doing.
Other comments, Commissioners? Well, I'm excited that Rockwell is going to get some attention, you know, being an East Side fella myself and having learned how to play tennis in that park through City Park and Recreation Program. I also remember that there used to be some type of day camp of sorts at Blanch Hall Preserve way back in the year. I remember these glass bottles of lemonade and sandwiches we used to get when we got off the bus or something like that, so there used to be a mansion there, too. I remember playing around in this big old house. You remember that? Okay, don't even try it. So anyway, we know that parks are important to everything we do in the city, and continuing to grow them and develop them and make them additional amenities for everyone and making sure that our neighborhoods have them is so important, and we appreciate the work. We continue to see you guys reach and grow and develop this amazing department and impact now our kids in so many different ways than maybe parks weren't used to doing in the past. So thank you for your hard work, your creativity, and your energy and effort and passion for Parks and Recreation. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Yes.
Commissioner Urban.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Knott.
Yes.
Mayor Hopewell.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Motion carried. Consent Agenda, Mr. Manager.
We have seven items this evening. First is the approval of a contract with Prine and Newhoff for professional services related to the 2019 lead service replacements in the amount of $220,000. Next is the adoption of a resolution vacating the 209-foot-long segment of Cooley Street north of West Calamazoo Avenue with the condition that an easement be provided to the Public Services Department for access to the underground utilities for maintenance purposes. Next is the acceptance of a 2019 grant award in the amount of $78,416 from the Office of Highway Safety Planning for pedestrian and bicycle safety enforcement and education. Next is the approval of easement agreements with the Board of Trustees for Western Michigan University related to the Howard Street Pedestrian Upgrade Project. Next is the approval of a public utility easement between the city and SZR LLC for the sanitary sewer lines located through 3603 East Kilgore Road. Next is the approval of the purchase of 441 Reed Avenue from the Next is the approval of the purchase of 441 Reed Avenue from the Kalamazoo County in the amount of $3,765.69 to facilitate construction of the next segment of the Kalamazoo River Valley Trail. Next is the approval of the following appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. First is the reappointment of Candace Howell to the Community Development Act Advisory Committee as an at-large member for a term expiring on March 31, 2021. Next is the reappointment of Philip Dietrich to the Environmental Concerns Committee for a term ending January 1, 2022. And finally, the appointment of Ian Magnuson to the Environmental Concerns Committee for a term expiring on January 1, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve Items 1 through 7 and authorize the city manager to sign all documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
Support.
Moved by Vice Mayor Knott, supported by Commissioner Anderson. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Yes.
Commissioner Urban.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Knott.
Yes.
Mayor Hopewell.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes, with the exception that I'm abstaining on Item F2 as the entity that employs me is involved in this vacation motion.
And Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Motion carried. Mr. Manager, you have a report this evening?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to provide an update on efforts that are underway from the polar vortex we experienced a few weeks ago, especially related to our homeless community and how things were handled throughout that period as far as warming shelters go. And out of that situation and in the process that we undertook to handle the situation came some action items that are underway. First, our Public Safety Department is working with emergency, county emergency management services in putting together emergency plans for these events in the future, especially as they relate to weather, cold, warm, tornadoes, flooding, those kind of things. And so that work is going to be done. Those plans are being developed and will be documented and, I guess, authorized, and we'll go from there with respect to the plans. The other component is how the different jurisdictions came together in this situation, and we want to work towards making this a partnership in how we approach this issue. There's a meeting that's being scheduled between the administrators of Kalamazoo Township, Portage, Comstock Township, Parchment County, and the city to begin discussing how we can partner in dealing with these matters, as well as an appointment or a meeting that's being assembled on behalf of the mayor and working with the county chair, again, bringing the electives together. So just an update on that. We'll keep everyone fully informed as those meetings develop and any action items that come from them.
Question for the manager. So, Mr. Manager, I just want to be clear. We do have emergency plans in this county, so it's not, it was appeared that, it appears that it was not activated in the way that it would normally be activated.
Yeah, and I guess with the, with respect to the polar vortex, there is a question about when emergency services get activated and when it's, the capacity's there for the city or community to handle it in terms of whether the Red Cross is activated or not. So it's working through those types of things and getting everyone on the same page with respect to that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, you have a report this evening?
No, sir.
Mr. Attorney, you have a report this evening?
No, your.
Thank you. Anyone in the public wanting to comment on anything this evening, please step forward. You'll have four minutes. Give us your name and whether you live within the city.
Good afternoon, everybody. Carl Weisman, resident currently in Portage but was living here in Kalamazoo, homeless at the time. I hear a lot of talk here about fixing the parks and doing different things. One thing I've never heard mentioned about moving into the future here in Kalamazoo, we haven't spoken anything about agricultural hemp to clean our brownfield developments, which is completely legal here in Kalamazoo and the state of Michigan. And if we implemented hemp, we could use that hemp, which we've already had a conversation, Mr. Hopewell, about the benefits of hemp, the hempcrete. We could actually fix our roads and our sidewalks with hempcrete, which actually fluctuates with Michigan's weather, so we're not having to constantly repair our roads, repair our sidewalks. It also doesn't get as cold as traditional asphalt and concrete, so it would actually already help remove the snow during the wintertime by just the thermal properties that hempcrete holds alone. We could use it to create, to fix our water pipes with hemp resin plastic. We could create many jobs right here in Kalamazoo County by implementing agricultural hemp, clean our brownfield developments, use hemp to clean our rivers. We also have a beautiful infrastructure of Arcadia Creek that runs, I think it's like almost two and a half miles, with waterfalls that drop every so often. Why aren't we implementing hydro turbines there that generate electricity? You could power KVCC with that hydro energy. You could, you could power the Radisson. You could basically power almost all of downtown Kalamazoo with hydro energy. Now, yeah, it's going to be expensive, but we got to look at price versus cost. If we're constantly paying consumers energy for power when we can use the students at WMU, brilliant minds, brilliant engineers there, why aren't we bringing them in to look into hydro turbines throughout Arcadia Creek and doing those different things? Because that's part of the plan by 2022 is to have a greener Kalamazoo. Am I correct? So why aren't we moving towards that green energy that is there and actually utilizing the very diverse plant that is agricultural hemp? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Good evening.
Hi, everybody. I'm Angel Johnston, and yes, I do live in the city. I am here to talk about the polar vortex and the cold blue response. Very happy to hear your update. It's nice to know, City Manager, that there is some work being done to prevent a near catastrophe. People would have died. I mean, I think we all know that. But there are some crucial components that are missing here. At no point have I heard of any debrief of any of the volunteers. You guys weren't the ones there the whole time. Commissioner Cooney, you were there. I saw you at least twice at FCC. You may have been there more, or maybe some of you were at these locations, but nobody was there at two o'clock in the morning. Nobody watched how everybody got fed three meals a day for days and days. Nobody was there from the city. There were no professionals there. This entire operation was volunteer-led. That's scary. Somebody brought up, like, well, what if this had been a mass fire or a tornado or a flood? What would happen then? What if it took out, say, a very wealthy neighborhood? What if everyone's cars got swept away? What would we do then? You know, we like to think we're protected. I assume you all have homeowners insurance. I have renters insurance. What if my car floated away? What if the hotels were closed? I'm lacking confidence in the city right now that you guys could handle it. And what else is government for? I mean, this is a big, big part of the reason that we agreed to be governed in the first place. So I encourage you to please put out a request to debrief the volunteers so that you have some concept of what was going on in those makeshift shelters. There's a lot you guys need to know. You could find, you know, fifteen different people all have one really important thing to say to you, and maybe you have to hear the same fifteen things fifteen times. But we have ways to make this a lot better. And since it was volunteer-led and it wasn't a professional lead from the city, it's imperative that you do so. I came tonight not only to speak to the entire commission, but to talk to Commissioner Sykes. Unfortunately, she's not here. I'm going to say part of what I had planned to say to her anyway because it's basically to all of you as well. Shannon was incredibly overworked. She was there, I don't even know how many hours. Yeah, I mean, anybody there can tell you, she was there constantly. However, at one point, in my opinion, she broke, and I watched her ego take over, and I watched some things happen that absolutely should not have happened. But Shannon's a commissioner. She's not an emergency manager. That isn't her job. She's human. She can crack. I came darn close a couple of times. I don't know how many of you know, I had my cry scheduled for Sunday afternoon when I drove home from a convention in Detroit. It took me a long time to cry. In fact, it took a recording of Pastor Dannison's sermon from that Sunday to finally help me crack and sit down on my kitchen floor and weep and weep and weep and weep some more. The things I saw over those several days broke my heart, and I had to keep saying, no, Angel, keep going, because I've got five balls in the air. I've got a family that needs somewhere where their young daughter can be protected. I've got somebody else who needs shoes. I've got somebody whose feet are about to get, you know, torn apart with frostbite and having their toes cut off. I've got somebody else who needs an apartment placement. I've got somebody who needs a tent. There's somebody who, now dinner's here, you know, where are the volunteers? Who's going to be here all night? These are questions not a single one of you could have answered. I had to answer all those questions. I am not a professional either. So I encourage you, please, when you guys have this big meeting of all the municipalities, please do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Dannison. I live in the city. I'm here tonight to say two things briefly. I want to first of all say and commend to you on behalf of the Diakonate of the First Congregational Church and the elders of the First Baptist Church, we extend our thanks and praise to you for your immediate response when you were called upon to help. It's not often that secular organizations like city commissions work so fluidly with religious organizations. There's a lot of challenges that have to be met. In our estimation, you rose to meet those challenges, and we're incredibly grateful for that, for your responsiveness. You wrote back immediately, and I know that you are all still working right now to address this issue, and I think it's been an incredible opportunity for us to reflect together on how we do community. The last person I want to bring you commendation from is Auntie Sahida, who lives in our church. And even though we said we weren't going to serve dinner, that decision lasted about 30 seconds after the first homeless person came to the church, and Sahida immediately began cooking about 500 pounds of Pakistani food. So she said to me, as we were packing up on the last night, she said, this is a good city. And I thought that that was such a profound thing to hear from somebody who receives protection from us but who is facing a lot of difficulty in her life. The second thing that I want to say tonight is I owe you an apology. When I originally reached out to you prior to the polar vortex, I gave you guys a promise that I couldn't keep. I told you in my original email that what we would do is that we would work together as a family of churches and that each church would take five to 10 people and then have three or four volunteers overnight per church. That was the original plan. I contacted 16 churches and I received 14 no's. The First Baptist Church said yes, but I have the keys to the First Baptist Church, so I think that they probably knew what was going to happen. It was my intent that more churches would participate. After reflecting on this process with my co-pastor, the Reverend Schmidt Lee, we realized that what's needed is advanced planning, and so we are creating covenants for the churches around the downtown area and organizing, we're going to organize some trainings for them with Raul Galvan from the Red Cross to get them up to speed well in advance of the next emergency. We will have a covenant in place with those churches so that they will commit ahead of time to providing births for at least 10, 10 people, five to 10 people in each church. They will sign these agreements, and then we will give a point person to Raul and to the county emergency manager to call to activate those churches so that the next time I come to you and say that I will deliver you 16 churches, that will not be wishful thinking on my part. But again, thank you so much for being as responsive as you were. You didn't have to do it. You chose to do it. And especially to you, Jim Ritzma, thank you very much for just responding. I complain about a lot of things, but the best thing in my estimation about this town is that you can pick up a phone and call somebody, and they call you back, and that just is incredible. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, please. Good evening.
My name is David Michael Cruz. I've been living here all my life. Became homeless four months ago, started going to these motels, and discovered after a while I had to leave my clothes behind because of bedbugs, fleas, scabies, quality of service real bad, full-price charge. I'm out of money. I'm in the street. I wouldn't even live in the mission right now because of bugs. I'm scared. All my clothes are gone. The place I live with Lucrent Management, they threw me out with no reason. They had bugs. I'm asking the commission to, what could you guys do about this? I mean, why is they getting away with all of this low-quality service? I went up north to Motel Eight, $50 a night, free breakfast in the morning, clean towels, beautiful sheets. You get down this way in the low-income areas within a mile, one-mile radius, you got like Kalamazoo Inn, bedbugs, one sheet a week, wash once a month or every two weeks, a steam towel, bedbugs, Knights End, bedbugs, dirty towels, used sheets, used box spring mattress, stained, new Airport Inn, roaches, drywall repair, broken windows. I went to, let's see, I went to Kalamazoo Inn, the lowest price was Kalamazoo Inn, that's what I could afford. Then I went to the Airport Inn, then the Knights End. Then I was trying to go to the mission, but somebody told me they had scabies, you know? I can't live with that. I left all my clothes to all these motels because I don't want to catch roaches, bugs, whatever. I mean, if you're trying to clean the city, we better worry about our health, too, you know? Especially around the creeks and rivers that could be coming there, but, I mean, we are close by there, and the quality is real bad for low, within the city. It makes the city look real bad. I mean, I paid $60, $55. I'm broke now. Spent about $4,000 in three months, and I want my money back, but I can't get it because they get to run the motel the way they want to, no vacuum, scuddy showers. I mean, the last place I went to, Knights End, he had heat on to about 62 and the freeze at that time. I was stuck for a whole week there, 62, when I paid for Friday and Thursday, I felt some heat, and I said, wow, you know? Had to leave at 12 noon, you know? But I think they can do a lot better. Just because they're foreigners, it's fine, but they treat Americans bad, especially low-income people. I'm asking you guys to help me if you can, you know? I mean, I'm homeless yet. I would not go to the mission. I refuse. I am homeless. The guy tell me, the only way I can get proof of being homeless is to stay there. I'm not going to stay there. I already caught bedbugs there. I lost all my clothes. I'm not going to take my clothes to some other place and give them bedbugs. I caught hair lice, bedbugs, all of these motels. You go to Airport Inn, you're going to hit a roach. You see him at night when you turn off the lights. It's awful. Why is the inspectors, when they come for inspections, why don't they ever do anything? What is it? I'd like to know. How do they get away with all this? Why do middle class way up this way gets beautiful sheets?
Sir, sir, your time has expired. Your time has expired, sir. Your time has expired. The timer is right there. It just counted down from four minutes. Okay. I'm sorry, your time has expired. Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Tim Graham, and I live in the city. I guess what I want to talk- I guess what I want to talk about is roads. I've lived here for five years and heard legislative promises at the state level, the governorship level, and anyone that drives around, most of the areas in this area, know that the roads are getting worse and worse. And I don't know if we have a long-term plan to fix the roads, but this is just not in a few neighborhoods, it's in almost all of the neighborhoods. And I don't know if we could come up, I know Kalamazoo Township, I don't know how they paid, but they fixed their roads. And I think one of the things we should do is maybe set up a committee and come up with some creative financing options to be able to deal with repaving our roads over a certain time period. I don't think there's very many people in town that would disagree that the roads need to be fixed, and I've been hearing that they were going to be fixed at the state level ever since I've lived in Michigan, which is about five years. So, anything we can do to set up a committee to try to fix our roads in the city, repave them, I think it would behoove everybody. And I, as a taxpayer, would be willing to chip in in a joint venture maybe with the city, the county, and the state. But there's got to be a way that we can finance our roads, because we can't go on forever with the roads looking the way they do right now. And, you know, it's horrible on people's cars. Anyway, I think that should be a committee we should set up and study and come up with some creative way to finance the cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Saying no one, we are at Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Cooney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Well, I really appreciate the city managers telling us where we are in this, but I think we have to go a lot further. I think that we need a plan, not just for emergencies, for one thing, but to deal with the homeless, to deal with the whole housing situation. We don't have a plan. As Commissioners, our responsibility is to set policy for the city. Policy means a collective solution to a social problem. So, it's our responsibility, not just these two's responsibility. We've got a huge problem here. So, I want to see a plan, and I would suggest steps toward that plan. I think we should hold public hearings. There's a lot of ideas out there. We're hearing about the churches coming up with their ideas. I think there's a lot of ideas out there. We should hold public hearings on that. I think our plan has to be multi-jurisdictional. We know that has to be there. We know that we have to, we utilize the expertise we have in this community, like my fellow Commissioner on my right here. We have to have them talking about what's working, what are the gaps, and what do we need to do to fill the gaps. I believe we need to bring a consultant in here who works with other communities to help them develop their plans. Now, when I say consultant, there are people who will cringe. We bring consultants in here for everything. We bring consultants in here about how to do our budget. We bring consultants in here to look at how we do HR. This is a critical issue, and I think we have to take it very seriously from now on. We've got to do something about this.
Thank you. Commissioner Urban?
I meant to turn it on. There we go. Well, I was gratified to hear the City Manager Ritzma, your report on what is to take place with regard to follow-up from the polar vortex event. So far, so good. We're not done yet, and I think you're well aware of that, and we all are well aware of that. So far, so good. So, I'll be waiting to hear what next takes place and when we'll learn what the plans are. It seems to me, though, with regard to the longer-term problem with housing, it's a bit much to expect that a city can do all that is needed to be done to realign the economics of housing in this country. There's a big affordability gap even for working people to have decent homes anymore. It's, single-family homes are out of reach, apartments are far more expensive than they might be just a few miles outside of Kalamazoo, and for what reason? So, I hope that maybe it's time for us as a Commission, since we are pretty much, I think, of one mind about the importance of dealing with housing, that maybe we should consider go into an advocacy mode and adopting a resolution that we can carry to the state and to our federal legislators to be part of a groundswell that might, needs to go on around the whole country, especially in the urban areas of our country. Well, the rural areas too, they're just as bad, they're just dispersed, really, to develop a nationwide housing program, because it's a crisis.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cunningham?
Pastor Dannison, I appreciate your sincere comments, and I just want to speak to the energy that you are putting forth to organize the churches. I think that is, for me personally, that is one thing that I've been asking for, yearning for, and actually putting energy towards, is organizing churches to be more intentional in spaces like that. So, thank you for your efforts and your time.
Vice Mayor? We adjourn.